Sorry for the delay, the student forum went all the way up to almost seven o'clock. So we have all board members present this evening except for Danny. I did not receive any public comments under three point O. So four point O is the approval of the agenda. Is there anything we need to add subtract correct from the presented agenda? Barry Nun will take a motion to approve.
So move.
Motion by Scott.
I'll second.
Second by Eric. Any further discussion on the agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Five point O is the approval of the previous minutes. Are there any corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to approve.
As a move.
Motion by Matt.
I'll second.
Second by Shannon. Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Six point O is the student council report.
We are the Speaker High School Council. I'm Andy.
I'm JD.
Since we last talked to you, we had the veterans' day program. We made a flag and displayed in honor of the veterans.
We also have done our annual blood drive. This blood drive was not as successful as it has been. Some of the people who signed up either couldn't make it or weren't eligible to donate. We made around thirteen units total and are hoping for better turnout in March. Coming up, we are working with the NHS to repair and collect funds for Toys for Tots. We are working with them to create some winter activities for the last day of school before holiday break.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Seven point O is the truth and taxation presentation and hearing. Brenda?
I'll jump right into the updated budget. Part of the truth and taxation meeting is quite required to go through our annual budget. And you'll find that updated budget on pages sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, the agenda packet. Our preliminary budget was approved back in June at District Bias State Statute. And it included the most current information we had at that point in time. Now, the updated budget reflects, we always know that there's going to be changes from the summer and then into the fall. And whether they are enrollment, staffing, contract changes, capital projects, federal programs, donations, whatever have you. We accumulated all of that data and put it into the updated budget. And that's what you see in your agenda packet. And that is, will be considered our official budget for the year that was published in the newspaper. Majority of the changes happened in the general fund and the capital fund. The other funds had minor changes. I'll try to be brief and I'll just try to talk mainly on the updates. But if you do have questions, let me know. The first page there on page sixteen is on the general fund at the very top. You'll see the preliminary budget is on the left. The updated updated budget is on the right. You'll see the revenue and one column expenditures and the other column. Now, for the general fund revenue, as we know, our biggest generator of revenue is enrollment. Enrollment that was included in our updated budget as of October thirty first. You'll see that in your agenda packet on page fifty two. We are sitting at seven hundred sixty eight students K through twelve as of October thirty first. Now, if you were to back up and look what we had estimated and projected back in June, we estimated seven hundred sixty eight. So we're sitting at the same total. They're obviously not all the same students. We had a lot of new students this year. But in the end, we ended up at the same level where we were hoping we would end up. Now, looking at the funding formula, funding formula has not changed from June. We're still sitting at the six thousand eight hundred sixty three dollars per pupil unit. Now, that's a two percent increase from twenty one, twenty two. And that's just the one line item, the funding formula line item. Now, of course, there's other line items within our general education aid that go up and down depending on the mix of our kids. A perfect example of that is our ELL students, those students that are identified to receive ELL students. I know Hope Schmidt has been working really hard at identifying those students. I have increased from June to fall that enrollment number for students identified for ELL. That has produced additional funding, about twenty eight thousand. I have updated the budget to reflect that. That's part of the reason why you see a little bit better position from spring to fall. Looking at federal programs, title program that was updated this fall, that was due September first. Revenues and expenditures increased there. On the federal COVID, also revenues and expenditures increased there. Talking a little bit about COVID, let's do a quick review. We have finished our spending on S R one. We are currently spending S R two. Okay? And the budget reflects spending all of S R two in this school year. That happens, it may or may not happen. A lot of the expenditures included in S R two are training costs. So it depends on how quickly those costs come in for teachers' training. There's also our Grow Your Own program. We've done estimates on what type of tuition costs will go out on that and a few other things that are very variable. So we do have until September of twenty three to spend that, so we do have some time. S R three, the twenty percent learning recovery piece, that's the highly restricted piece. That is included in here as well. That's over a two-year period. That includes the commitment to Mylan for that after-school program. That's twenty five thousand a year for two years. It includes our culture piece, that's twenty thousand and twenty thousand, so a total of forty. And then it includes our attendance advocate, our new, our social worker that is now working on attendance. So those are the three things that are in that twenty percent restricted piece. The other piece of the S R three we haven't touched yet. We will end up having some training costs that'll go through there, but at this point, they are not committed. That's the last for that S R three piece. We also have COVID testing grant that was reauthorized. We will be looking at spending that very shortly. Not a lot of money, but we do have, we do know what we'll be spending that on. And that'll be some air purifiers and then some things that the nurse's office needs for tracking COVID. We just have to get approval. Oh, and then one thing, reminder on S R, we talked about this back in June. But all of our S R costs are now not, they're one-time costs. So we are not relying on COVID for any ongoing costs. The cliff we talked about earlier, that does not exist for our school. I know that isn't the case for some other schools, but for our school, it does not exist because the costs that we have in there are one-time costs. When those costs go and our revenue goes, it's not going to impact us in the future. Any questions on COVID?
How much is left in S R three?
I would say probably a solid eight fifty. I would say depending on when, again, those training costs come in. If they don't come in soon enough to meet that September deadline, we may have to fast forward some other costs to make sure we don't lose that funding. And then we'd have to tap into S R three for that. But I would say we'd stay maybe about eight fifty.
That's what I would say. And remember, we have another year. I think those are, I think those are about twenty four.
Yeah, September of twenty four.
So all of the planning that we had talked about, we followed through on at this point. And that money's just in reserve. And actually, it doesn't show up on our books because we don't have it. Remember, we have to expend it and then we get reimbursed for those expenses one day.
Is that reimbursed?
Is that the same for S R one and two?
Oh.
Same deal?
Special ed aid, wish I didn't have to talk about that. It's still a struggle. It's a risky area. It now, we're now in a situation where it's live data. So we struggle in knowing what some of those tuition costs are from other schools. And until things are finalized, the number kind of moves around a little bit. I did increase it though, based off of updated numbers from this data. I increased it about sixty two thousand. Piece of what's showing a little bit better on our bottom line. Interest revenue is the big thing that changed from, from spring to fall. Rates have been on a steady incline. Not sure if they're topped out or not, but I was able to increase our revenue budget by a hundred and thirty five thousand just for interest. And if rates come down, that's a solid number. We're still going to get about a hundred and thirty five thousand additional from what we had budgeted. We're definitely taking advantage of those rate increases. And we'll just have to wait and see where we end up at the end of the year. Back in June, we set aside thirty thousand for any unreserved lining. I changed that to twenty five thousand, so that's about a ten thousand dollar increase. Better position on the revenue side. Expenditures, staffing changes have been updated, any staffing changes have been updated since the contracts in spring. The utilities, Adam and I reviewed that again. We did the best we could and we did some updates there. One thing that's new, that I had to add, the tuition costs for some students in care and treatment. That would be over and above the students that go through the special ed formula. These are ones that we actually get a physical bill on and have to pay it out. They are going to a private parent treatment facility, so it's not through a public schools or they're a gen ed student. And we actually get a physical bill that I have to pay it. To our benefit, insurance went down, so that was kind of a wash because I did have to add about sixty seven thousand. It's just an estimate on those tuition costs that will depend on student need. So overall, the improvement you see in the general fund is, can narrow down to our increase in interest. A little bit of increase that we've had, a percentage of the three thousand dollar increase in special ed and then the ELL increase that we've had. And I'm not so sure that we've identified, I know Hope is still working on, on all of our identifying those ELL students that might be increasing. Time will tell on that. One thing to keep in mind too is we were able to meet our goal when we did our fund balances for twenty one, twenty two for the unreserved, unassigned. We, our goal was to get it to one point six million. Now, we will have to update that based off of current operating expenditures which have increased. So our new, new goal for that line item will be about one million seven hundred and fifty thousand based off of our current operating expenditures. So it's good that we will be able to, should be able to satisfy that policy that we have in place for two months of operating expenditures. One thing, big thing to keep in mind, there will be an adjustment for twenty one, twenty two special ed aid. The auditors require us to book the most current number which, before they come, which was August thirty first number. We know now in our current situation that that number's going to be moving around and it still is moving around. So we booked what we had out there for, that the state had out there as of August thirty first. We really are not going to know that number until after the year. So we know it's going to be positive, but how much, we're not quite sure. As soon as those numbers finalize and we know and we for sure what we're going to be receiving, we'll have to make an adjustment. That adjustment will happen in twenty two, twenty three, but it is actually for twenty one, twenty two revenue adjusting it. And we'll let you know when we know what the number is. Enrollment too, of course, is a key indicator. We'll have to be watching that very closely as we do every other year because any change in enrollment will impact our budget. Any questions on the general fund? General, general, general fund. Transportation, special ed change, increase that fund as well that flows through that area. We have one less bus route. And I did increase fuel again. I'm not quite sure where fuel prices will end at the end of the year, but I increased it another ten thousand. So we're sitting at a hundred and sixty thousand in the budget for fuel only. Fuel over the last ten years have ranged anywhere from eighty thousand to a hundred and eighty thousand. So we think that we have enough sitting there. Last year, we ended the year at a hundred and forty one. Vehicle purchases, we've already made our vehicle purchase. It was one van for a budget of thirty one thousand. We are potentially going to be looking at purchasing another vehicle in the spring. We will look into that a little bit more, hopefully, trading in a vehicle and then come before the board and ask for approval on that. I know Kristen will be looking into that. And if we can do it in the spring, we would like to. But of course, we'll come before the board on that because that is another vehicles map in the budget. Capital fund, updated five-year plan items slightly. The only thing that was bigger that was updated in the five-year plan was the new robotic field painter machine thing. So that was updated in here. The main change you'll see is pulled out in that small little section there that talks about insurance claims. Now, we have three of them. We have, the first one is in Appleton, the damage done by a vendor. And we have received those funds that came from the vendor's insurance policy. It was twenty five thousand. The repair has not been made as of yet. Second claim is at the Madison Elementary. That was also damage done by a vendor. That is about seventy four thousand roof and floor damage. That came from our insurance. Okay? You'll see a five thousand dollar shortfall there. That's our deductible. We could give that back. That's in process. Third insurance claim is the wind damage we had district-wide in May. That was about fifty two thousand. The deductible on that, we actually paid last year when we paid some expenses related to that insurance claim. So that's what you've got there with all of those insurance claims. Any questions on those? You're probably all mostly aware of all of that. Student activity, I changed that just a little bit, upping it to twenty five. And twenty five, still don't have a good year with history, but we're getting there. Another year, I think. Last year was a pretty weird year. Potentially normal activity was about a hundred and twenty one thousand. So I think that's sitting at a okay level. Turning the page to service. The rates on the revenue side were increased. Our federal reimbursement rates are not known until July, so we did update those. They were very generous on the update because they, I'm sure, know that a few of their food prices and milk prices have went up drastically. So those numbers were updated. Our lunch, per lunch or per meal ranged, increased, ranged anywhere from twenty five cents to forty two cents a meal. Breakfast, anywhere from seventeen to thirty two cents a meal depending on what type of meal it is. We also increased, Kami and I went through all of the food and milk budget on the expenditure side. Did update that as well, as best as we could. Not quite sure where there's, those will end up because, again, those prices have increased pretty significantly. But having said that, we do not have any concerns with this fund. We have a very healthy fund balance. It's doing well. We will also be probably looking at potentially more equipment for the food service kitchen areas through these winter and spring months. And come and ask the board for approval on that as well. But again, not a concern in this fund. Community ed, very minor changes in this fund. The biggest change was in the Little Eagles daycare. You see, that's pulled out the special section on the bottom there. One thing to definitely keep in mind in the community ed fund is both Little Eagles daycare and Kids Time. Both of our daycare programs have COVID revenue in there. So that's one-time money. So when that money goes away, it will impact this fund. Building construction fund, interest has been increased. Expenditures has been also increased slightly. The shortfall you see there, three hundred and thirty six thousand, that is exactly equal to our fund balance. So this is spending that entire fund balance that is left as of June thirtieth of twenty twenty two, a balance. So that would bring this fund to a zero and it would close then once that happens. Okay? We also, of course, have our SiteLogic donation money. That is not in this fund, it's in the capital fund. That's that three hundred and twenty five, you seen that pulled out in that section? That's where that is. We have all the time in the world to spend that, those monies. Construction fund, we do want to get that closed as soon as possible. Last two funds, only thing I changed in there was the interest. Increased that on both sides. One thing to keep in mind on the revocable trust fund, that's the last one, Fund Twenty Five. That fund goes hand in hand with our actuarial audit, our actuarial valuation. So the number, the forty thousand dollar expenditure number you see there is based off of our audit that we had two years ago. So that number will be updated now this spring. That audit is actually starting tomorrow. So once we get an updated number on that, I'll have to update that as well. And that ends up being a very firm number of rate for that audit. Hope, anything, any questions? Okay. The levy certification, twenty two paid, twenty three proposed levy. Also, in your agenda packet, number fifteen, we'll see the proposed decline of about ninety two thousand five hundred dollars. That is the exact number that was proposed on September thirtieth. So what went out in tax statements is that number. It did not change from what was set to be county auditors. Again, it's a proposed number. We will come back to the board now in December and ask for approval and to certify our levy. Is there detailed questions on the levy? For schools, just a reminder for schools on our levy. We have very, very little control of what, I mean, schools and counties, they are able to say, hey, we want to increase X number of percent. All of, almost every formula in here is tied to enrollment. And of course, is also tied to a formula that's in state statute. The only thing that we have that's special to us and to many other schools is our referendum. Okay? So that is voter approved and it's for a certain number of years. And that's special to us. The rest of the stuff is basically in statute and is tied to enrollment. The only other thing that we had that was special, also special to us, was the Multi FM Asbestos Health and Safety Levy. That was a one-time special levy that we had to satisfy some abatement issues in Appleton. That is the main reason why you're seeing that decrease. It was on last year's levy, it was a hundred and thirty thousand, and it has not done this It was on last year's levy. It was 130,000 and it has not done this year levy. It was a one-year levy. Any questions?
Any questions from the general public? If you're none, we'll move on to 8.0 to approve the proposed 22, 23 general fund budget. Motion by Scott.
I'll second.
Second by Matt for the discussion on the budget. If you're none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 9.0 is Wold Architects and Engineers. They'll be here to discuss building and grounds needs. So guys, come on up.
Good evening. Do you want to introduce this kick us off?
Well, I guess I think everybody knows why you're here. Just to review though, the school boards, facilities and buildings committees, Scott, Eric and Matt workshop about a month ago or so. And Paul and Kevin were here at that time to present some information about the, some work that we're wanting to keep in front of you that we might like to do regarding air handling and our, and climate control systems for this facility. And the committee thought at that time it would be important for these guys to come back again, make a presentation to the whole board. So everybody be on the same page with what we're looking at and what we might be moving forward with over the next few months or whatever period of time we, you decide. So I'm going to turn it over to you, Paul, and you wouldn't mind introducing the rest of your team.
So you just introduced ourselves quick. I'm Paul Appelkowski. I'm an architect and partner with the firm.
I'm Tyler Hertl, also an architect with Wold.
Kevin Marshall, mechanical engineer.
All right, and we've put together, what I hope is a brief presentation if we can be, try to be succinct about it. We included some information in here just so the board can get a little bit familiar with our company. I'm going to go through it super quick because I know you have other things to do tonight. If you want to stop and talk about things or have questions, please let me know. And then once we get through the introductory slides, we'll have Kevin talk a little bit more about the actual mechanical projects and what we found. Bear with me because we have to present from behind. I've got to read that back to my head. So I want to talk a little bit about just what makes us different as a company. We as a firm specialize really in public work. We do, about three quarters of our work is K-12, public education. We do do other government work. As you may know, we're doing some work in the, for the county out here, so we do that. But we really specialize in working for publicly elected boards. And we believe that our mission statement is much like yours. We're here to serve the community and really take a long-term view. So we're not here to just do a project and get out and make a profit on you. We're here to be here for the, as long as you'll have us and do long-term planning and really think about how each piece is a chess move in a bigger picture so that we can help you be successful with your facilities. We have a lot of resources. We're a pretty big firm. We've been around for almost, climbing up on 60 years here pretty soon. We have over 300 people in four offices and our main office is in Minnesota here. So we have 200 people here. So we have plenty of resources to get projects done. At the same time, we really believe in relationships with our clients. So we actually have a small team. So the people that you're seeing here today are the people that will actually work on the project. The rest of them are just there to help when we need them to do things. Another thing that really sets apart is involving stakeholders. So one of the really difficult problems in doing big projects and facilities is they're complicated. There's a lot of moving parts in them and a lot of communication that needs to happen. And we really are good at involving stakeholders so that everybody understands what's supposed to happen is in the process of getting it done correctly. And then when they're done, they're satisfied with the product. That's how we really measure our success. So we spend a lot of time communicating with people during the project so that there's no misunderstandings. In addition, we have a lot of experience obviously with public buildings and all the things that go with that. We understand the budgeting processes and the rules that the MDE goes by. We can really hit the ground running with everything. I just put one project example in here and it's just sort of a taste. But in this case, we took the locker rooms that are on the one side of the slide and turned them into this great modern learning environment, fellow learning studio, which is a super flexible space. I sometimes call it the classroom of the future. So we're able to just really transform environments into different things. In this case, it was a middle school that was turned into an elementary school and the locker rooms weren't used. So it was a great way to create more space. And then if you're interested, I put this link on the slide here that you can go over and see a lot of our education projects. We certainly have plenty of experience and know how to do not only nuts and bolts projects for fixing things up, but how to modernize schools and create learning environments. A little bit about our project management. Again, we pride ourselves on being super responsible. We're here to help you understand what it costs to do something upfront and then commit to that and follow through on the project so that you get what you think you're getting from the beginning. And we've had some conversations with your finance committee, I think is the title of it. It's a very challenging time to do that right now because of all the inflation that's happening and lead times. But again, we're well positioned to understand what's going on and help you get ahead of it. So you can understand that ultimately our goal is to help you deliver on the promises you make to the taxpayers that ultimately are funding these things.
And as Paul mentioned, a lot of the ways that we set up for success is through that stakeholder and user involvement. And so that continues from the start of the project all the way through the construction phase. And that really helps us to be successful. So what we like to do is we create a process called user groups where we're reaching out to, once kind of the building blocks or the main discussion topics are, have been landed, we use this user group process to reach all of the users or as many users as you want to involve in our process. That way, when we're doing our construction documents and into the construction phase, we know exactly what to expect. And also the users, when they use those spaces, when they're turned over, know exactly what to do as well. And then we go through a large internal process to make sure that the quality of our documents is up to snuff. So that way during construction, we try to be as proactive as we can. And some of the ways that we try to do that, staying on schedule, on time and on budget is often a phrase that we use just to maintain our course and keep evaluating everything for you so that we are getting the fair value and not, you know, taking advantage of or anything like that.
And again, part of what sets us apart is really the communication and the style with which we collaborate with our clients. So we really believe in a consensus-based process. So we certainly understand that we ultimately work for the school board and this firm head is sort of our boss and tells us how to go about doing our business or what's approved and not approved. But we're also really good at involving other people appropriately. Again, and our goal is to make sure that people have ownership. So as Tyler mentioned, even on a mechanical project, it would not be uncommon for us to meet with at least certain representatives of the teaching staff. So they understand, you know, that their rooms are going to get ripped up over the summer and they might have to pack some things up and what to expect when they come back. So again, you don't have to take the burden of that when the project is done. They're not coming to you looking for answers for why this happened or that happened. Our hope is to have people informed beforehand. And with that, I think I'll just stop and see if there's any questions about our firm or maybe if some of the finance committee has any questions that they had from our previous conversations that they want to share. All right, well then we'll dive into a little bit about what we found about your middle school, high school project here.
Just to get into a little more detail specifically about your project. I believe this is in your quote packet. First page is just a summary of information from the last referendum. This is supposed to be for us, just to get up to speed on the recent history and your district. One takeaway from the first page is that the last referendum passed with overwhelming support from your community. Second page is a little more detailed about what specifically is a plan that's in the middle school, high school. This is a plan in the last referendum. Weeks ago, we were able to spend some time out in the building with Adam. Looked in a little more detail about what's remaining in your facility. Were able to come up with a list of recommendations of outstanding work that kind of picks up where the last referendum left off. Work that would be soon needed in this building. So just to summarize that, the first category of work is the air handling systems. There's 14 air handlers that are serving ventilation and maintaining the environment in your building that are original to the 1989 construction. Nearing the end of their useful life, it should be considered for replacement. Associated with that are the, what we call variable air volume boxes is what maintain the individual room. Comfort control are also of that same vintage. And then third category of work is all of the other equipment that was installed that still remains from the original 1989 construction. We did find an opportunity in reconfiguring the hot water distribution system in simplifying it to improve the operating efficiency. In converting it to what we call a primary variable secondary distribution system. Essentially goes from 25 pumps that you have in the building down to just three distribution pumps. That simplifies it and improve the operating efficiency. Item to consider with the water system would be add one additional pump to redundancy. Chiller was replaced in, I believe, 2004. Still has a lot of life left in that that would just be incorporated into the work we're talking about here. The sixth item is completing the that's the controls, all the mechanical systems and maintenance that go through the building. Associated with that would be moving away from the original pneumatic controls that were installed in 1989 to modernize that to all electric, electronic controls. So it's part of a cohesive system that all works together. And then found one electrical panel that lives in the whole equipment room that's very corroded that should be considered for replacement. So it's a summary of works that were done in our building that should be considered for upgrade and replacement. I guess that page is just a summary of the overview of the air handling system. Highlighted there are the systems that were replaced in the last referendum. What's not highlighted are the 14 remaining systems that should be considered for replacement. And then where we left off at the facility committee is we left with some homework to do to look at those 14 systems. And through, through the lens of potential funding source through the LTFM funding, there's a step of approval to get through with the Minnesota Department of Education where we need to show that it's deficient in terms of today's standard for COVID ventilation rates and dehumidification capabilities. Since we left the facility committee, we were able to complete that study and have shown that it is actually not meeting current standards for interior K-12 environment. So it would qualify for LTFM funding if you choose to go that direction.
And to be clear, that's actually, it's a component or a different slice of LTFM that allows you to levy above your regulated amount with bond. So, right.
That's deficiency.
It's health and safety funding under LTFM.
So the color-coded drawing here actually looks up to moving into each color-coded area is an area served by one of the 14 air handlers. We looked at each of those in more detail specifically in terms of the area served, number of occupants that are expected to be in that zone and their ability to dehumidify the space. All 14 are deficient.
Again, we can pause for questions and then sort of the next segment where do we go from here? Are there any questions about what we found?
I guess something that I want to raise, and we talked about this within the committee, was if we were to move forward with this project, this wouldn't start tomorrow in terms of actually accessing this equipment if we found a way to afford it. So could you speak just a little bit to what you're seeing on replacement timelines? I know you have a timetable here, but is that based on how soon this stuff? Could you speak to that or where are you going anyway?
Sure, yeah. It's, there's a number of steps to get through just to make sure that your funding is set up and all those kinds of things. I think another step that you want to go through is, I think the plan would be to not do this all as one big project. It would be done over several years and that is not figured out. We would have to figure out what you were interested in funding per year and then we could break the project up into those chunks. So there's a number of steps to get through. That's going to take a few months. And then after that, we would need to do the actual design. There's a lot of hard work that goes into actually figuring out the design and the contract documents and bidding documents. So you're really not in range to do anything next summer. The first summer construction would be December of '24. So what we would recommend, given the current market with the incredible lead times, is that by midsummer or so, midsummer, late summer, we'd be ready to go up to bid. And then you would sign contracts for that first phase of construction with those bidders and they would then order stuff. And some of it would not arrive until the following summer if things are moderate now. So there's a lot of things that are readily available, but usually there's a few key pieces. Certain air handlers, certain electrical equipment is taking sometimes up to a year to arrive. So we need to get ahead of that. So the answer is you should keep moving in your decision-making process and decide if you can do this.
So I guess where I'm coming from a little bit on this is these air handling units, most of this equipment was original to the building in 1989, meaning they're 33 years old today. And I don't know if there's a life expectancy to give on this stuff, but we're on the back edge of it. And if a, the, if one of the systems goes down in this building, we have no windows that open. We have no way to circulate air except with fans and that type of thing. And a good share of our year is with air conditioning and other share of our year is with heating and we would be defective of the movement for any kind of air. So I'm a little, I'm very concerned, not a little, I'm very concerned that, especially with the timetable that you're talking about, that we move sooner than later on some kind of a plan. And my understanding is that if we wanted to, there is a vehicle that we might be able to experience that would essentially be a discretionary levy, a levy that the board would take action on that could authorize us moving forward. But we can't get to that until Wold, if Wold's a company you want to work with, until Wold would present this to the Department of Education and it would be verified that these things hit the criteria that qualify for an LTFM project, right? It's called LTFM plus. And so I just want to encourage the board. He is saying it's going to take maybe one, two, three, four years to do this. I would be encouraging that we look at, well, what would happen if we could do most of it all at once? Or, you know, how could that be addressed? And I did go through a project like this. Your units are 33 years old. Ours were wearing out. Redwood Falls at 26 years. So we put a roof on and replaced all the air handling units. And it took a whole summer and we were in the building when the building was, when we had we had no air movement and it was absolutely miserable. So I cannot imagine what it would be if I had children, you know, students and staff in the building. It's a game changer in a lot of ways, health and all that stuff. So I don't think I'm crying wolf here. I just want you to know that if one of those units go down, we would have an emergency in my view to deal with. And so we're trying to be very proactive right now. Our units are working, but they're older and they're starting to malfunction. Adam is here tonight, but when we talk, his concerns are about finding parts. You know, how do we do this and how, is this good money chasing bad if we're going to need to get new stuff anyway? And so I just feel like it's an issue almost of the heart instead of my, I didn't hurt my hand here, my heart stopped. And so there's a big difference in what that means. And I think that's how we would feel if we had one or two or three of these things go down all at one time. So I am very excited that there might be some options that we could look at. I think a very fair question that actually Lydia has been around longer than I, so she was in on some meetings with the, on the previous project we did on this building. I think a legitimate question is, why didn't they, why didn't we include this on the bond issue four years ago or whenever the bond issue was held, 2019? 18, 19? But I mean, there's a very good reason. There's evidence that they were looked at at that time and only one showed up as having to do something with immediately. And so I wasn't ready, you know, if I hurt my back and I need back surgery tomorrow, somebody could say, why don't you do that five years ago when you had your appendectomy? Well, I didn't need it then. We're at a point where now this is presenting itself and I think it's prudent for the board to look very seriously at how we address it immediately. In our two elementary schools, everything is new now. We're in great shape with, in answering these kinds of questions, but that's not the situation we're in out here. So it's kind of a plug for moving forward and, but also a comment about recognizing it's, given the time, we might have to wait. I think it's something we really need to get going on, even though it might be uncomfortable. I think the public wants us to make sure we're always doing the prudent thing. And just about everybody that I ever talked to about roofs and air conditioning or furnaces, they recognize these things happen every so often and they got to be dealt with. So I'll stop there, but I appreciate the work you guys have done so far. And I apologize, board, that the timetable isn't in color because as you can see, this is a lot easier to read. But I'll turn it over to you guys on whatever's next.
Sure, just to bridge some of that conversation, Kevin and his team have done the analysis and we believe that it does qualify for the MDE. We have not presented it to the MDE.
Actual submittal for funding for a project in 2024. We do June 30th of 2023, the actual submittal of paperwork. But to get equipment, materials lined up, again, it's something that we would want to get started on if we were going to plan for summer of 2024. It's something we want to do on a day above time or soon to be.
So if you're interested in going, or we'll have a conversation with Adam and sort of give them the sniff test on it and make sure that they're in agreement, then we would have high confidence that you can put it into your normal plan for next year.
Sure.
I could just, a quick run over the schedule. So the blue at the top is basically what we've done and where we're at now, which is we decided if you want to go with the project or not. The green bar then would be the design time, so I have several ones in there. That would put us into bidding sometime probably in July of this year. And our proposal, obviously the superintendent just suggested that you may be trying to do that as bigger projects, but we were assuming that you might break over a few years. So we would suggest that the whole project get designed upfront. And then you can choose to break into pieces if you wanted to and if you did those out in subsequent years. Normally it would be a good idea to get those on the books sooner rather than later because you lock in your pricing. But in the current market, I think I would gamble on the future and whether or not we're going to have some better pricing going forward. So we'll see how that works. So that's what the schedule is set up around. The first red bar labeled the bid period would be whatever is in phase one. Those contracts would be let then in the fall. They would order their stuff and then they'd be ready to go in the spring of next year and start with demolition and construction. And then obviously they would always have to get things put back together for school. So we've worked to size those chunks so that they can fit within the summer. And then the gray bar at the bottom just suggests that in future years, you could repeat that cycle. Whatever the next phase of construction is, you can bid that out and go through that cycle for each subsequent year.
And would you help, so if we did split it out in a different project, would you help to kind of figure out how that would actually happen? Because I'm sure there's a lot of, things are tied, you can't really split this from this or whatever. So you guys would help us with that if we wanted to go to that route? And then the same kind of, not same, but a different issue of the subcontractors that are coming out and help? So if you're doing one project with one, but you need them for the next thing, if you split it out, are you going to run into that problem? How do you get them back? If you do it that way?
Yeah, so we can talk about that a little bit. So the answer is yes. And that's part of the reason we're suggesting that the whole project get designed upfront so that we know how all the pieces fit together. And then we would help you figure out which ones can be done as sections of the building, most likely is how it would fall. I probably should spend a little time explaining that we are not like, so SiteLogic was the last outfit that you worked with. We're not the same kind of outfit as them. They kind of take everything under the wing, including construction. We are more traditional designers and engineers. So what we do is help you prepare bid documents and then help you get them out on the bid market and you get bidders. So those strategies are important. Things like the controls, for instance, are really hard to break up amongst multiple contractors. So it's likely that we probably want to bid the building controls as one package even for subsequent years and we have ways that we can do that. And then if you choose to build, break up the other parts, those can be done by different contractors. But what you're talking about is one of the hazards of doing it in multiple packages. And because we're bound by the bid laws, when you put it out to bid, you can only control so much of which contractors are going to be in subsequent years. And if that is a big concern of you and we can talk about that certainly, then we would want to do it as one big package. The other thing that you could consider is bringing a construction partner on, like a construction manager. We can work with them and they would also work to break things up into packages and help with some of those things. And we work in both formats more comfortably.
And does that long term, does that funding cover that kind of thing or is some of that got to come out of our own pocket to kind of manage it?
Yeah, the budgets that we're presenting to you, we always try to present total project budgets. So for the most part, that is the construction cost plus a factor that covers what we call soft costs. And those soft costs are our fees as well as construction management fees, permits and all those kinds of things that you need. We're always trying to give you the bottom line number on piece.
Theoretically, could you do all 14 in one shot in one summer?
Depends on how brave you are. I think that's not a yes or no question, it's a risk assessment question. So.
I just know our appetite isn't.
Pretty aggressive.
I just think our appetite really isn't for a long drawn out project again. So I would, I guess I would do everything at once, but.
It would be ambitious to try to do 14 air handlers. To do a building this big in one summer would be very ambitious. It's not impossible. What it does is it puts you more at risk of not having something working on September 1. And this is also part of the reality of the world we're in right now. So in 2012, when we were just coming out of the recession, I might have been bold enough to tell you, sure, we can do that because people were tripping over themselves to try to get work. Right now, it's hard to get people to show up and you're seeing that in all segments of the market. So in your risk assessment of whether or not that's a good idea, you'd have to factor that in, that the supply chain issues and the labor issues would put you at more risk of not being able to complete an aggressive project like that. So I would say that something like two summers probably would become a more reasonable thing. And there's other options. If you can vacate parts of the building so they can work year round, that's a whole game changer, but I don't think that you've got the kind of space here. You're probably focused on summer projects. This totals between probably 13 million, I think.
Just over $12.5 million.
Yeah, so with construction costs, that gets you to a little under $10 million. So doing $4.5 million to $5 million per summer is already pretty aggressive. That would be a good pace to be at. We would certainly be happy to look at it in more detail when we got more design done and try to figure that out.
So if it has to be done over summers, can you have all those materials ordered and in a warehouse or something somewhere so we're not running into, oh, you should have bought them last year, now they're $300,000 more per unit?
Yeah, absolutely. If you were going to do it over two summers, I would recommend that you contract it all at one time. Somehow when you get to three summers, that, what happens when you bid it out is the contractor has to take the risk for price increases. And you can let them order them early and all those kinds of things, but somewhere around three years, you start to think that they're going to pad their bids each other. Their costs and things like that might increase sometimes. But for sure, if you're going to do it too, I think it makes sense to do it back.
Any other questions for these guys? Thanks, guys.
Sure.
Appreciate it.
So what is your process going forward then for decision making?
Well, I guess, I think you guys would have to think about this and probably I would be asking you to make some kind of commitment at our, was it December 21st meeting? I think that's when the next board meeting is.
19th?
Or 19th? 19th. Now, you know, if you're not comfortable or if there's something that I'm not thinking about that could get in the way of that, but I was, I'm hoping that we can send every signal that we need to be pretty aggressive in moving forward, given all the concerns there about getting product and, you know, the stuff we just went through.
Yeah, I think we, I mean, you have to do it. I mean, we heard three years ago that the public wanted all the schools. So how do you keep up the school? You have to do this. I mean, otherwise you guys laid it out, you can't go without heat, you can't go without cool air.
And sometimes the public will say, well, I want to off this, well, we could have done this three or four years ago. If you were set at, what was it, 39 million or whatever bond issue was, wasn't it about 39? Well, and if you think that the product might have been 10 million at that time or 11 million, you'd have 11 million less of a product, projects that you would have been able to do if you were limited at that time to 39 million. So, I mean, this isn't an either or, this is an and at this point. So I just, I've taken quite a bit of time to think through that and I'm going, you really, this is just where we're at and this might be the best time to have to deal with it while our units are still functioning, but we know that's probably going to change. So if you're okay, Corey, I think I would structure having some kind of information on the board agenda for the next meeting that would send signals to these guys that go ahead and start doing whatever you need to do or have the conversations. And then at some point, we would have to make a decision on how we're going to pay for it, but that would be after we know that it's an approved project, right?
Well, I think what I would suggest is when we prepared this original memo, we didn't know if you wanted to try to do the whole thing, so we put it into packages. But I think for your 21st meeting, we could kind of assemble that as a whole package, you know, evaluate the budget and make sure we feel good about that. We could present our proposal for that part. And then we could also work on some of the financing things so the board could have some idea of what the financing would look like for that decision. I think that would make sense.
So if you're all right, then that's what we'll proceed and Monday, the 19th, I guess, would be our next time. Would you come back out for that?
If you'd like.
If you, if you need to, or do you just need the board to take action to authorize? What's that?
You buy me a Christmas present. That's for this project.
It's called a project. So, okay, well, if that works for you, then the board, it sounds like they want to address it in December and go from there. All right?
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, guys.
Sounds good. Thanks a lot, guys.
Here we go again. Got to do it.
All right, we'll move on to 10.0, the Lackawee Valley Multilingual Learning Language Instruction Education Program. Request for LIEP approval. That's a mouthful.
So, Ford, I just want to say this, that when we had our board workshop a couple of weeks ago, there was six topics we talked about, but one of the very most important was our EL, a work that's being done in the district. And prior to that meeting, Hope could talk to us about the need to address the LEIP or LIEP manual. So one of the things we're going to do tonight is that, but we want this to be interactive when we have questions. Because Hope has done a ton of work on our multilingual project and is here to share a little bit about what's going on with the Mylan Kids Program that you helped, you're helping support with some of the ESR money that Brendan talked about earlier.
Ford, before we begin, I just want to make sure that you have the entire document as part of your agenda. It should start with Lackawee Valley. Is that what you're asking?
The board's got a bunch of plans.
Version?
To keep the public consumed, we always return on one side.
Wonderful. Okay, so like Rick said, is some informal space in, if you have a question, you will ask. There was one discussion curated at our last board meeting that has some answers aired to some questions that you had. I've been working tirelessly on this MDE plan. It is the month of November moving forward. Every October, it will become our practice as a school board to review our language instructional plan for Lackawee Valley. We have had a document like this in the past. It is just now beefed up to meet all of our MDE expectations. So I'll begin with this snapshot that you saw at our last school board meeting that was kind of a back and front that showed our percentages of qualified English learners in the Lackawee Valley School District by building. Now, we have students who are multilingual learners in our buildings who no longer qualify for English learner services. So this is just showing the percentages of students whose English language proficiency shows that they need English language support in order to fully participate in classes that are delivered in English. So just to say that again, at Lackawee Valley, if you step into a science class or a A class, it is a class that's delivered entirely in English. So multilingual services at Lackawee will look at the different models are to help those learners who we know need extra support in order to fully engage in their education, right? These are the different languages currently represented by students at Lackawee Valley. These are the native languages of all of our English learners. We have Tchus, we have the highest percentage of Tchus students in the city who have Tchus as their native language. And it's also our largest percentage of English learners within our buildings. We also have students who have Spanish as their native language among Portuguese, Samoan, Kuntagi and Tamil. So I know that it can be tempting to maybe say our English learners all speak one of these or one of these is the experience of all English learners, but we really have to keep in mind that we have quite a diverse representation of languages. So as we talk about bilingual paras, right now, we have bilingual paras who speak Tchus, but not who speaks Spanish. And that would be a great room for improvement for our programming down the road. The next four slides, I thought was, it was important to put our demographic information as well, again, just showing that just because a student isn't qualified as an English learner doesn't mean that they don't have a multicultural family. So this is for Appleton Mylan Elementary, showing that we have quite a diverse race and ethnicity representation. I go on to include Madison, Marion, Nassau, that's in Cleveland. This data is recorded from the Minnesota Report Card MDE tool and we will just update it every year so that we always have the most up to date information. And we will just update it every year so that we always have the most up to date information. I think it's powerful to look at the data that you see here because it's not necessarily representative of what we see for adults represented in these spaces. And that's something that the goal for our, our programs in the future is that the adults are representative of students. I'll put you there, the Lackawee Valley Middle School demographic information and Lackawee Valley Secondary, which is grades seven through twelve. Slide, it's about like, what is a multilingual learner? And there's two qualifications that the state of Minnesota put up for the board for us. One is that they have a native language other than English. And then that other one I highlighted, and that's what I started with, that these students lack the necessary English skills to participate fully in classes that are taught in English. And there's so many acronyms and I feel bad for all the acronyms within education. But I, you have within the list, there's even more than I have on this slide, but I am going to touch on some important ones. E L stands for English learner. Another phrase that we use and that is recommended by the state of Minnesota is M L, multilingual learner. And it's taking that extra language and viewing it as an asset. We know that if we cut off that student speaking their native language, that we decrease their learning. So I, when I meet with my students in my classroom, we were, today we were using the word clever. I said, you know how clever you are that you speak two languages? Miss Hope speaks one and is learning a second, but you already know two. So it's using that first language as a vehicle to learning their second instead of saying, we don't speak that here, English only. Instead, I can say, can you say that in English and in Spanish? It's so exciting to see when a student, they make, they're so smart. They make those connections on their own anyways. E L D stands to the English Language Development Standards set forth Minnesota uses the W I D A standards. So just like a content teacher has standards for their classroom, I do too in my English language classroom as well as we share these standards with our classroom teachers to help understand how we can develop language skills. M N L S refers to the Minnesota Language Survey. Brenda did such a nice job touching on how we've been working hard to identify more English learners accurately within our educational system. And this Minnesota Language Survey is a big part of that that has helped us, again, increase our accuracy in identifying these students instead of just guessing based on maybe what a family looks like and offering them a question about languages or just referring to a couple of questions on our registration process. Now we have a really clear and clear way to make sure we are properly grabbing students in for services. Other things that we will talk a little bit about tonight, but I hope the conversation continues down the road. R A L, R A E L stands for Recently Arrived English Learner. That is a student who's come to country in the last eighteen months. And then SLIFE stands for a student with limited or interrupted formal education. And this is a student whose learning demonstrates that they are two years behind their English learner peers. And what we are, we are learning as we've made all these changes to our programming this year is that we will have to get even more finite in how we plan for students who are R A L or SLIFE. That just means that if a student is born in America and has had environmental access to English, that they are going to require different English language supports than a student who just came here from Mexico. And, and we can provide that programming within our school system, different school kind of day plan for them. W I D A is the consortium that Minnesota has adopted for our standards. They help us with our language proficiency screener and also with access testing. This is the standard English language proficiency assessment that every E L student takes in the spring of every year. So access annual assessment for English language development for English learners. So, you know, it's a bedtime reading material if you want to go back to tonight and review. I'm going to go on to page five of the LEAP. So what is the identification process? When a student registers at Lackawee Valley, as of this year, it is now standard procedure that they all fill out the Minnesota Language Survey. And this is on page fifteen of your LEAP, so it is part of your appendix documents. If you want to turn to it, I think it's a really important conversation to be, so it's going to have you go ahead, go to page fifteen of your LEAP. And you'll see at the top, it says Minnesota Language Survey. So sometimes we want, and parents will come to us as educators through this thing, they'll say, but my child doesn't speak Spanish at home. I speak Spanish, but they don't speak Spanish. They're not an English language learner. The Minnesota Department of Education has us give this survey to families so that they can indicate if their student first learned another language that was other than English, if their student can speak another language, can they understand another language other than English? If they can't speak it, but if they can understand it, that means their oral language exposure and their development's starting to be happening in another language. And which languages does your student have consistent interaction in? If any of these checks is anything other than only English, then the E L teacher in that building is notified and that student has to be screened in or out of English Language Learner Services. Sometimes we have parents who are not comfortable identifying information on here when they register. So that becomes a conversation between the E L teacher or the registration staff in the building and that parent saying, so that's another way we could catch a student. Maybe a parent said only English all the way down, but a parent has a concern or a teacher has a concern, they might come back to me and say, well, you visit. I just kind of suspect that maybe there's another language that happened in the student's history. We would go back, the parent would refill out the Minnesota Language Survey, and then we would screen them. Based on the screener score, any student who has a proficiency overall that is lower than four point five qualifies for English Language Learner Services, they qualify for the entire year. If a student comes from another school district, the language screener or access score, that's another way that they would be captured into our system. So it's just saying if they had a LEAP plan at another school, they were identified, we wouldn't have to re-screen them. They could just be part of our E L services when they come into our school program.
So can I ask a question? So the way, and maybe it's just the way you have it written, but you say all students fill out this form, right? So when I read this form, it says, my student first learn, my student speaks. So it's almost like from a parent's perspective versus it saying the student's filling it out. So I'm just wondering how you deal with that for those maybe parents that can't read or understand? How, how do they then get help to then get this figured, you know, filled out for their kid if the kid can't do it either?
Yeah, no, so I'm really glad you asked that and I should clarify this. So this is a parent that should be filling this out at registration, so that's wording that I will change, Eric. It's part of the registration process. It's filled out for every student is what my intention was there. We have a requirement as a school district to provide documents in families' native languages. And that has been a struggle in the past and it is something we are catching up to and using technology to help with some of those languages that can put into Google Translate and it will put an entire document up in Spanish for you. But Chukies is not a language that works that way. And so our bilingual para educators have been working around the clock to start translating all of these documents for us.
So what if the parent can't read though? Then, then how do we handle that situation?
So I, I'd like, when a parent is registering, then at least in our school building, the school secretary will call down one of the bilingual paras and then they will translate it for them.
Okay.
It, it's always, the responsibility always falls on us as a school district to provide this information in whatever way that parent needs. So if we needed to call a translator and set up a phone conference, we would need to do that. And we have, have done that before. Does that answer that question?
I think so. Yeah, I, I wondered if we had people that still assist if, say, the family can't get it figured out, you know, and filled out.
Yes, and we.
Because I'm sure that happens from time to time.
I would say that all of our registration staff is really being proactive and kind of looking for that when it happens to. When we have a document that comes in that looks like, wait, you put the birthday in the wrong spot and like maybe somebody who was filling this out didn't understand what they were doing, but the phone call, we're reaching out. We always want to offer that partnership with that family.
Sure.
So, we're trying to be proactive about that. So thank you for flipping to page fifteen. I'm going to go back to, I'm on page six of the LEAP, that talks about parent notification. So just like you had touched on here, once a student, excuse me, is eligible for placement in the multilingual program, parent or grandparent must be notified in writing within ten days of them being placed and given the opportunity to withdraw the student from the program. We use documents from TransAct, which are M D E certified, and they are also included in the appendix of this document. So a parent has to receive this via mail. And then a, a parent also has to receive one, say, your student's spring access, their language proficiency score and the spring did not exit them from services, they got a three point five, they need a four point five. If your student is going to still be enrolled in services for another year, that parent receives annual notification. Your student is still in English learner services. They get a pretty hefty document that talks about what they're getting, what our goal is for them to exit. We are working on translating all of these into all of the languages that we have. A parent has the right to refuse services. So even if their child goes to apply and they say, I do not want my student to receive that support. I don't want them to have the bilingual para looking out for them in the classroom. They still are classified as an E L student in our Mars data system and remain so until they have an access, a spring language proficiency score that exits them from services. So I'm talking about the service model.
Can I ask a question too?
Please do.
Can they refuse to take the access test?
They cannot.
So they, so if they're identified, they, they have to take it?
The access test. It, it's like a, like you have to take them, see if they can.
Okay.
So if they refuse to be in part of that program, how are they expecting that child to?
Learn.
Learn. I mean.
Say that again, Scott.
So if they're not, if they're refusing to be a part of the program, the, how are they, how are they even expecting their child to learn?
So in my experience in working with parents that have made this choice, there is maybe a fear or a stigma about being an English learner, right? And they don't, they are afraid that their child might have that stigma if they're having a, a multilingual teacher next to them or a bilingual parent next to them. So we work really hard to try to educate our families about what our gains are that we're trying to make for their students and how an English learner teacher can also service a student by collaborating with their classroom teachers and making suggestions and providing anchor charts and things for them without me hovering over that student or them being pulled out to my classroom. We, this is all about meeting the student where they are at. We have the luxury of getting to do that in E L services. But some parents do still choose to not. So we, that's a phone call. They have to sign an exit letter. It goes, or excuse me, a refusal letter and it goes in that student's Q and file that follows them if they were to transfer school districts.
So we could hold that kid back then if they didn't pass third grade? We could keep them in third grade?
I have to defer that question. I have not been a part of conversations about student retention. I don't know. It's data, right? It's data that the student qualified, their performance still looks like this.
No, I'm saying if the parents refused, kind of to Scott's question, they refuse to have any extra services for their kid. Their kid doesn't get any better because they've refused these services. Do we then hold that, that child back?
So that, that's a question that the building leadership and the teacher and the parent would all be part of, just like it is now for any other kid. Retention isn't something, there's a lot of research says that's not something that really helps. So generally, figure out a way to, you have to deal with it, but it, it could be held back. It's just that there's best practice to do that.
You go through the process.
Right.
With any other student. Would it perform interventions for a specific amount of time? So I mean, we don't follow the protocol that you would follow.
I think it's critical though to, to get to parents and so they see the, the gift of having this help early. Because their child will be out of the program in a year or two or generally if.
So the student will exit English learner, language learner services on average in three to five years. They will exit newcomer services in one to two years.
Okay.
Some students will never be a newcomer.
But the point is, it's, I think it's really healthy to work with parents so they understand the goal is to have it be that they won't need the services anymore because they totally exited the program.
Yeah, Corey, I would, I would leverage, right? As the English learner teacher, if I knew that I had a third grader that was at risk of needing to repeat, I, that is a phone conversation between me and that parent and, and letting them know, oh, this is what we could offer and I, can you please reconsider? I'm giving them that power again, make that choice.
Do we, do we know what kind of numbers we have that are refused? So was it a hundred and forty-two are in the services? How many aren't taking it but need it?
I have not reported it. It's in the single digits.
Oh.
Very few. Yep. Most students are enthusiastic about this support. I just wanted to include that so that this is like our football playbook. If you are working in, in our multilingual program in Lackawee, then you know the ins and outs of every way this could go for a family. So.
If they were to, if they were to change their mind, like would?
Yes.
Yeah, would it start like the next day or would they have to wait a week or?
No.
They would just, the next day you could just start it?
Yep, so let's, sorry. See, at conferences, you know, a couple of weeks ago, maybe if we had a parent who was refusing and at conferences, that teacher and I bring up the fact, we're, we're still really concerned. Do you mind if I sit in? I want to share what English Language Learner Services could look like for this student. The next day, they would have access to a para or an E L teacher. Our, and at least in the Appleton Mylan Elementary building as well as at the middle school, high school. Now there's, there's multilingual staff every day and in different grade levels. And we have now built the program out here and continued to flesh it out so that we can respond to really specific needs when needed. If that makes sense, like I, I have a student who just is, needs a reading intervention, is not getting vowel sounds. Can you come in for fifteen minutes twice a week and just give them? So we're able to respond really specifically by how we're designing it out instead of, every kid has twenty minutes of pullout Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. There's not a lot of flexibility in that because you're just chasing these service times. So M D E came out and said, I want you to push in as much as you can so that you can meet the needs of any student. I, I can have eight English learners in one classroom. They now all have access to me when needed. Well, that's a different model. So here are the service models for multilingual students at Lackawee Valley. We were just kind of touching on them. Pullout looks like an E L teacher pulls students out of the general education classroom and they're in an E S L, English as a Second Language Classroom. We are doing that currently with our newcomer students at least once a day in Appleton and in the middle school and in the high school. Our newcomer students in Madison are pulled out twice a week for a longer time period because of less access to an E L teacher. But trying to get them all at least thirty minutes on average daily of access to E L pullout time. But if you are above, and we'll get to these proficiency tiers. If you are above a tier one, you're a tier two student, benefit from a push in service model, which is an E L teacher or a para educator coming into your content area classroom. We are working on building kind of these sheltered models, which we might be able to try out during summer success programming or even later this year for math at the middle school, high school level. Sheltered just means that the E L teacher and the content teacher, the math licensed teacher, work in collaboration in a E L kind of specific setting that conducive to language development. There's some correlation to our special education services, right? This push out, pull in, same kind of inclusive language that we are looking at. This is a really big table and this reflects, I'm on page seven and eight of the LEAP. So what does the student get based on their language proficiency level? Based on what building or what grade level they are at? An elementary student with a tier one student, that means they have an overall proficiency score of one to two point five. So keep in mind they need a four point five overall score to access services. So this, this group of students who is at our lowest language proficiency level receives thirty to sixty minutes each day of push in or pullout, English language support that meets English Language Development Standards. If a student's A D M, that's average daily membership, is over two years, then the state requires that they only receive push in support. So if a student has been part of English Language Learner Services, A D M means average daily membership for over two years, we now need to make sure that that student is totally inclusive in general education setting and servicing them through bilingual paras and a E L teacher coming in to support. And if that student isn't making those learning gains, we need to start looking at evaluating why else aren't we making those, those language gains? Uh, MDE student receives thirty minutes of pullout and precision support, one to two, two days a week, delivered by EL teacher or bilingual para educator. An advanced student, tier two and tier three are the same kind of support. And that was the recommendation from MDE. I think where we as community members and educators have to be careful sometimes, we have tier three students. There are students who've been part of our English language services for four years. Their social English is great, like they don't, they don't need help anymore. But what we find is that their academic English proficiency really is what needs support. Um, I know, I don't go home and talk to my kids about quotients and dividends. It's that kind of school language that you only use at school, um, that we need to continue to build even more for our English learner students. The right side is a tiered model for secondary, so five through twelve. Again, that tier one having a pullout, uh, option that happens almost daily. And then tier two and tier three students more of a push in collaborative support. Any questions board about these service models? So I touched on this at the beginning, this is SLIF and RAIL students. So again, SLIF is limited interrupted formal education. Sometimes we have refugee immigrant families that come to our school system and their students haven't been in school for a couple of years. This student would qualify as SLIF. A RAIL student is a recently arrived English learner. They have only been in the United States for eighteen months or less. We now know that these students need a different type of programming, right? They need even more support than what a, an English language learner who is born in the United States and had more English exposure would need. So in, just this week in the elementary school, the, our RAIL, our SLIF students now receive two pullout times a day, one in English and one in math. And that's what we're looking to replicate at the high school. It will just be if staffing and time allows for that. If not, it's something we will look at for the, for the next school year. Any questions about these expectations? So I am now on. AP, oh, sorry, page nine. So the annual student progress evaluation, the access score. The access testing as located by the WEADA consortium is the language proficiency test that happens every spring. And this is extremely important. Every EL qualified student has to take the access test. And it's about an hour long language proficiency test that looks at listening, speaking, reading and writing. And they have to have that overall score of four point five in order to exit from services. You can have a four point four and you do not get to exit from EL services. So a student has to have a four point five overall composite. And then that, it goes into the weeds a little bit. You also have to have three point five or higher in every domain. So say they were just like a rock star at, at, uh, listening, but we had a three point oh in writing. Well, then that student's still going to exit. And as an English language teacher, you're taking that information going like that student needs an intervention in that language specific area. We need to move them up so they can access services. Access scores are organized by grade level and should be used by staff if it's being in a tier to correspond with WEADA can do descriptors to inform classroom accommodations and modifications. This is something new that we tried this year is a spreadsheet so that all general education staff can have a kind of wide range of English learners in their general content spaces. And then, uh, equipping them with a WEADA can do descriptors. But we definitely have lots of room for growth in how we equip our general education staff with tools to help these English learners. Exit criteria comes from that access testing. They have to have a score of four point five or higher with all domains three point five or higher. In the instance, only one domain has access below three point five. Additional teacher criteria such as parent input, uh, excuse me, additional criteria such as teacher and parent input could be used to inform exiting from services. Something new that we are implementing for recommendation from MDE is a two-year monitoring. So if you can imagine, a student's ability to exit EL services relies on that one test score. Well, it can kind of be, um, it's like a shot in the dark, right? Maybe they had a really rough day or like, man, they struck out. But if they struck out, just really lucky, but in the year following this exit, the teachers that the student is working with see that they are declining again in educational performance. This monitoring document that will be carried out by the building specific EL teacher will help us to catch if that's happening. And then we can rescreen a student to see, uh, is, are they English learner? Not to be, to be active in all services. Something else new that we've developed this year is the Lackawell Valley marking and grading system for English learners. It talks about it on page eleven of your LEAP. And there is a pre-page document at the end of your LEAP that begins on page twenty-three that is our Lackawell Valley English Learner Success Plan Form. I'm just gonna, I'm gonna talk to you, it's around grading time and the policy goes into effect for quarter two. So a lot of our teachers have been asking really great questions about. So it is the expectation that all teachers are required to differentiate instruction and assessment to align with the English language development level, domain, or overall proficiency score of the English learner students. This is just like if you had a student on an individual education plan in your classroom who would be expected to accommodate, uh, based on the needs in that IEP. It's the same with our English learners. Teachers with students who are starting to achieve successful grades will use the Lackawell Valley Success Plan Form each quarter. What I really appreciate about this form and that our staff have been great asking questions about is what it does is if I have a student who is getting a D or an F halfway through the quarter, it's the expectation that I print out or begin a, a online version of this form that I'm documenting how am I accommodating for them? And also how am I having conversations with family members as well as EL staff and school staff at school council? To see how can I reach this student? This is some really beautiful wraparound services that we're providing. And I've heard a lot of talk from staff about this. This is really best practice for any student who's struggling. So I'm excited to see where this goes. I expect that there will be some changes to this document with staff feedback as the program continues to grow this year and next. But it's a great starting point. Any questions about the Lackawell Valley marking and grading information? All right, this is weird. So I remember you asking, how are we going to measure how, whether or not this program is doing anything? So here's the expectation moving forward. It is state law that we need to annually evaluate our multilingual learner plan and our services to make sure that they are bringing forth continuous improvement. And modeled by district leadership to ensure language barriers are actually being overcome. So how are we actually moving that dialogue through? Our evaluation will look at needs for students, families and staff, so all stakeholders. Effectiveness of strategies, how is push-in model working? Do we have enough staff? What is, what is the efficacy of pushing in when it's carried out? Fidelity of implementation, what is our EL curriculum? Assessment tools and implementation? And what kind of technologies are we offering to help overcome these barriers? So here's my measures. I'm very excited. Lackawell Valley School Board Annual Review of the Multilingual LEAP will take place in October of each year. October is a very important month for EL data. Our Title III funding is tied to October one, EL data. So why, so why October is a timely, uh, time to review the segment. Annual review will include annual EL exit rate percentages. So how many students are we actually graduating, exiting out of services? It has been in the single digits each year in the past and that, that needs to change. We need to make sure that we are, we, we need, if we have a hundred and forty or a hundred and fifty students qualified for English language learner services, I think we are capable of getting more than five exited from services each year. So that's, I don't have this data year to year compiled yet. But next October, I hope to tell you, right, this is what we had in twenty nineteen, this is twenty twenty and this is, so that we can be measuring that annually. And then also what is our student growth on access language proficiency testing in each language domain? So I want to be able to come to you and say, last year at Lackawell Valley, students in the area of writing increased on average point five. And, and then be able to compile that year to year so that you can have that data. And then, uh, a big part of this is those parent relationships, right? Family interviews with stakeholders, including teachers. They're doing a lot of the heavy lifting on this, parents, administrators, district supervisors, et cetera. So here's how we're going to do that. One thing we will create moving forward is the Lackawell Valley Multicultural Parent Association. And this was a recommendation from MDE because we didn't have very measured ways of showing how we were gathering, interview information from our multicultural families. So Lackawell Valley will help to create the Multicultural Parent Association that meets four to five times throughout the year. This association will be facilitated by district appointed EL staff member and will invite families of our multilingual students to learn more about school culture as well as other desired topics. This forum will be used to collect information, feedback that will shape multilingual programming. So this we expect to have in place by the end of this year. Uh, and these meetings will start to happen so that when we have that October review, we have stakeholder firsthand account information from parents. Another big gap I think in the past has just been how do we communicate with all the stakeholders and including our general education teachers, including our leadership staff. So we touched on first language parent materials. With parents, we also use interpreters, phone calls, our district website, Parents Square, and translated social media posts. We have a two-piece Facebook. We are reaching far and wide to make sure that parents are getting data. And I have some really measurable ways that we know that that is working this year. So we are making great gains in reaching out to our parents of our multilingual learners. For teachers, it is our goal to have annual staff trainings, sharing of multilingual program updates and materials through email and staff meetings. We can't expect staff to carry out things if we don't give them the tools and the communication and expectation and space for feedback. So we are going to ramp that up. For administrators, multilingual topics are discussed at monthly administration meetings as facilitated by the designated district EL staff member. So this will now be a monthly topic at our administrative staff meetings. Then, uh, something else that will come out of this newly created LEAP is the Lackawell Valley Multilingual Planning Committee. So Steph, I know that in a month or two, there will be this time to kind of assign committee roles. And I hope that if this is a topic that is on your heart or on your mind, that you consider being the board member representative for this committee. We need to make sure that it never happens again, that our board feels like they didn't have all the information about what was going on with our English language learners. And this is one way to guarantee that. So the planning committee would be quarterly. This group will include one to two members from the school board, administrators, teachers and input from parents and from students. That's another point. I know you get to have time with students today and we want their voices to be heard too. Any questions about the parent association or the planning committee?
Just one that I have. So I wrote in here that we needed a board member or two on each of the committees. Is that right? Or do we just need them on the multilingual?
We just need them to be on the multilingual planning committee. Yep, so a board member would not have to be present at those, the parent association kind of events. Always welcome because it's just good rapport, but not an expectation.
So then Lisa included in your, uh, materials for next month, I guess it's coming out next month. But we have a, we've added a spot on the committee membership thing. So we'll need one or two people to sign up for that for the LQPV Multilingual Leader of Planning Committee.
Darkwood Doors, truly.
And then Hope is the person appointed administratively to attend our meetings, at least for a period of time. So we can carry on the dialogue about how it's going or what we need.
Yeah. I was very excited to compile this part of the LEAP because it's something we should be proud of. We do have quite a few educational and community supports already in place that benefit our multilingual learners. One of them being the Myland Kids Club. This is an appropriate time and input comments. Give us an update about all your hard work.
Thank you. So I'm Anne Thompson and I'm from Myland. And, um, I have been an ESL teacher for about thirty-five years. And I just want to thank you for inviting me out here and thank you Hope for all the work you're doing. And as Hope said, um, being multilingual is definitely not an obstacle, it is an asset. So before I give you the nuts and bolts of the kids club, I just want you to understand where I'm coming from. So, um, I, I, I think Lackawell Valley schools should be celebrating its diversity in its student population. I have no idea what the percentage is of bilingual students in the school, but I, I feel it's significant. And that alone just opens up so many doors for the whole student and staff body. People that speak different languages actually think in different ways. So, um, you know, that just opens up different views of the world and how things get done and just makes for a richer learning experience at our schools here. So we're so lucky. And, um, yes, of course, English is important in their education. It, it, you know, it's, it's vital to their education, but also maintaining native language is vital as well. I was, I, I read reports all the time and today I was reading a report from the University of Pittsburgh talking about the importance of maintaining native language. And this study was done in nineteen, um, uh, sorry, back up here. There's something called subtractive bilingualism, you know? Parents of, of immigrant, uh, immigrants whose first language is not English often maintain their language at home. But kids, once immersed into the, um, American school system, often forget their native language. And so the question comes to a point, what support? I'm just going to read this because I think it's really, um, interesting and useful for all of us. It says, why support minority languages in a country where English is the language of the prosperous? Shouldn't we assimilate children to English as soon as possible so that they can succeed in the mainstream, the mainstream English speaking culture? This leads us to consider an essential question, does language loss matter? Through the research of many linguist psychologists and language educators, it has shown that the effect of native language loss reaches far. It impacts familial and social relationships, personal identity, the socioeconomic world, as well as cognitive abilities and academic success. And studies have shown that students who are familiar with their native language and are studying another language, they actually learn it faster, they do better in school because they have a sense of self, they are, they feel grounded. And so, um, and I think in probably most of our bilingual student situations, native language is spoken, spoken at home. And so, and another thing we need to keep in mind with our EL students is that at the end of a school day, these kids, if they're, if they're just starting out, they are exhausted. They are exhausted. I don't know if any of you have ever studied a foreign language. I have, I studied Chi, I studied in China for a year. Our classes were entirely in Chinese. After a half an hour, I was ready to go home and go to bed. It is exhausting. So those kids are shot at the end of the day. So when they go home to their, their families and their native language is spoken, spoken, it, it's a relief. It's home, it's comfort, it's safety. And we should also be encouraging that. Like I, I'm, I, um, as I said, there's comfort in that. And I'm, I'm a fourth generation Norwegian-American and I still find great comfort at Christmas, speak, uh, singing carols in Norwegian, studying the Norwegian table prayer. I've never even been to Norway, but it, I, I still feel comfort in that. So, um, but yes, as, as we've been talking about, we must do all we can to accommodate our students and families, regardless if the student is at Lackawell Valley for thirteen days or thirteen years or anything in between. And so in Myland, um, as we, as Hope mentioned, we have our, our new kids club. So, um, it's in, for kids in grades eight through six, and it was mainly funded by, um, this, what's the?
DS.
Yeah, yeah. And also we did get a small SWF, Southwest Initiative Foundation grant for some of the younger age kids. So we began our club, we had a launch on October twenty-fifth. And we, we meet on Tuesdays and Fridays from three thirty to five, so right after school. In the old Myland school building, we have dedicated spaces for the kids, hang out. In the old Mylan school building, we have dedicated spaces for the kids, hangout spots, you know, and all sorts of areas for them to gather. On the first day, we had 22 kids. Now we average somewhere between 30 and 40 kids. So I was talking to Mo the other day about, we've created a monster, but it's a good monster, trust me. So we have two Micronesian parents, staff members, as well as myself. We also have members of our youth club, Mylan Youth Club, Youth Center, which is for kids in grades seven through 12. So they come and help. And also, I'll forget that part, I'll talk about that later, sorry. So our whole philosophy is learning through play. I mean, we don't have kids sitting down doing math problems, they've been doing that enough, you know, throughout the day. But learning through play, so the kids get off the bus, they have a healthy snack, they usually have some kind of story time, interactive story time. They have lots of games, puzzles, art, they have group activities. The first day, we did a team scavenger hunt, a fall scavenger hunt outside, and it was just, it was really fun hearing the conversations. We were all outside the old football field. Way across the field, I heard a kid yell out, "I found a bug!" So, and also, we've had, was, last week, we did a paper chain challenge. So they had teams of four kids, they had a stack of paper, one pair of scissors, and then one glue stick. And they had five minutes to make the longest, so you could make the longest paper chain. While there was in-fighting, I mean, it was, some teams had it all figured out, so when they finished, you know, we measured the chains, and we talked about it. And, you know, I, I asked the kids, would you like to work with your team again? And some kids said yes, and other kids said, "I hated my team." And then we talked about, you know, working together and the notion of compromise, and the kids were really excited to participate. We also had a club logo design competition. So some kids designed logos, because we're getting T-shirts made, and they voted, so the kids could participate, so realizing that they belong, it's their, it's their club. And hopefully, in the new year, we're going to start some cultural learning sessions, so get some Micronesian elders to come and, and, and share stories, or some craft, or something. So, and I've, I've already witnessed some emerging, emerging leaders in, in the youth, in the kids' club. A sixth grade girl taught the whole group this TikTok dance, and then they recorded it, and we put it on GMI's Facebook page, so. And I always encourage the kids to keep their Chukies language. And I always tell them, two languages are far better than one, you know? But the conversations are going on in English. Once in a while, one of the Micronesian guides will, you know, line somebody up in Chukies, you know? So, and how will we measure success? So I think we talked about that, Mo, is looking at the standardized test scores from year to year, also a survey, I don't know if that's that survey. Participation, do kids actually come? Well, so far, they have. And then any feedback. So I, and I want to thank you for the opportunity for us to do this in Mylan, because I, I do believe it's, it's important. So, does anybody have any questions after all that rambling?
Questions for Anne? Thank you, Anne.
Thank you. Yep, thanks. We had parents at conferences last week going, "You want them to speak Chukies?" Yes. I mean, look at what an asset it has become for us to have bilingual adults in our spaces. They can't be that proficient bilingual adult if we, if we are discouraging that. So families are noticing the change in approach as well, and students being with pride when they can use their native language, whether it be Spanish, whether it be Chukies. And then tell Ms. Hope in Spanish what you just learned, and then tell me in English, and it's just, I can't do that. So it's really amazing. In other games, some of these bilingual initiatives have looked like students getting glasses because they finally got a letter in their native language about the vision screening form. Let's kind of point with that. Some of these are not going to be measured in a test score, but there are some really beautiful games that are happening. Other program supports educationally and in the community sector available for multilingual students and families is the Diversity Club. Rachel Rigan, Hayden Rich lead that up here in grades nine through 12. We have our Summer Success School Program, which services students K through four, and we've looked at ways to service our newcomer students up through grade six, or, I'm sorry, services kids K through six, and we get to service even older newcomer students. We also have after-school tutoring. Paul Lowry has applied, and he facilitates this after-school tutoring. He's applied for the NIBLY Grant, I believe, which funds that. That is available on Thursdays. We're looking for ways to expand our tutoring offerings in the future. And we have adult basic education courses offered in all areas of our school district. What we hope to do is get this information out to families in their native languages, use all of those social media platforms, and just keep working to connect families with school values so that they can be successful. That is the end of the week report. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Hope? Thank you.
Thank you, Hope. All right, based on what we've just presented, I'll take a motion to approve unless there is further discussion or changes.
Motion to approve.
Okay, we got a motion by Scott.
I'll second.
Second by Shannon. Any further discussion? Hear none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
So I want to thank both you and Anne for all the preparation, all the work you've done. Hope has gone from zero to 60. As Anne said, has done an amazing, she's also working with Maureen, I know they're looking at some test score data, so they have another way to assess this. I also want to give you a lead-in right now that you can feel, I'm sure the program's gonna need to grow in terms of staffing. But I do want to compliment Hope and Julie Esfeld, our Mars coordinator, because just since the beginning of the year, in the work they've done to identify children, to make sure we're properly registered in the Mars system, they've found about 40 students that were not registered properly before. And each one of those students generates about $700 more in funding than what we were getting before, which is $28,000 just for those kids. And we're gonna be needing that money to keep ramping up here as we go forward with conversation that we're having when we look at our whole district. And so I really appreciate all that you've done and your fortitude in keeping this going, but also on the heels of one of our last board meetings, your willingness to come back and explain, take this time and explain how engaging this program is for everybody. I think another shout-out, our staff are, are doing an amazing job of moving us from where we're, where we want to be.
I can't say thank you enough to our staff. It can be pretty intrusive to have an EL staff member come in and make recommendations to how you can make a more language-rich environment, and I have been met with nothing but smiles and willingness. And that says a lot for seasoned teachers who are already great. So our staff is, and then also to equally ask questions and say, "This isn't working, how can you help?" That takes a willingness and an awareness, so my hat's off to them.
But also takes leadership, and so we appreciate all you've done to help us get to this.
Thanks.
Thanks, Hope.
Okay, 11.0, the monthly financial reports.
I don't have too much to add. The only thing I'll mention is the reports in here are reflective of preliminary budgets, so next month I will report updated budget. And secondly, I had hoped to have the audit report handed out tonight. I know it is in the mail, we just have not received it. But we'll get it before the December board meeting, because we will be wanting the board to approve that at the December board meeting. Any questions?
Brenda. Thank you, Brenda. 12.0 is the bills and claims for the month.
I make a motion to approve the November 2022 board bills of $209,935.44. October 2022 manual checks of $98,481.70. November 2022 construction bills of $26,600 for a total of $335,017.14.
We got a motion by Matt.
I'll second.
Second by Shannon. Any discussion on bills and claims? Hear none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. 13.0 is the 23 dental and vision insurance.
I feel like I only have one option.
What?
We need one. So currently, we have Delta Dental, Delta Dental, sorry, sorry. And that's in our vision insurance. And in September, we received our renewal for January, and it went up from about 25%, 27%. So we reached out to Justin Kruger, Kruger, from Gallagher, remember? He was the one who did our health insurance renewal, and he came back with some pretty good rates. If you see them on page 62 and 61 in your agenda. The services are about the same, and you, in column one, you'll see Delta Dental, the current rates, and in column two, I'm on page 62, you see Delta Dental as a renewal. And then the proposal is MetLife. So the renewal for Delta Dental, about 27% increase, and then for MetLife, the proposed is actually a decrease of about 4%. Yep. So.
Is the network the same?
Yes. So along with that, we did the vision renewal as well, even though we had a two-year guarantee. And that premium actually went down 9.99%. So little, so overall, we reduced all of our premium for employees for both vision and dental. The recommendation is MetLife, and then to go with Gallagher, Justin Kruger from Gallagher as our representative for the district.
And you mentioned, Sue, that that firm already represents us for the health insurance.
Correct.
Any questions on the dental or vision? Pretty much hopeless insurance anyways, but. If there's no questions, I'll take a motion to approve to change it to MetLife for the next, next year.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Shannon.
I'll second.
Second by Eric. Any further discussion? Hear none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. 14.0 is the gifts, donations, and grants for the month.
Make the motion to reduce.
Okay, we got a motion by Scott.
I'll second.
Second by Shannon. Any discussion on the gifts and donations for the month? Hear none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. There are no changes to the consent agenda. So if there are no other changes or objections, I'll take a motion to approve the consent.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, we got a motion by Matt.
I'll second.
Seconded by Scott. Any further discussion on the consent? Hear none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. 16.0 is to, again, be a member of the Minnesota State High School League Foundation. And, Tony. Do you know if there's a cost to that?
There, there's no cost to this, but we qualify for reimbursements if he finishes the season in the black. So this is a part of their foundation. They put on all their tournaments at the end of the year. As long as you pass this motion, we would be in the hopper to qualify for possibly any reduction of fees or reimbursement.
I'll make a motion, Dave.
Okay, motion, Eric.
I'll second.
Seconded by Matt. Any further discussion on the High School League Foundation? Hear none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. 17.0 is the balloting locations and combined polling. Well, that'll come up next. During non-statewide election years, so if you remember back, a couple of years ago, we failed to pass this, and so it cost us, I don't know if it cost us much, but it, it created chaos, at least in the Mylan district and some of the other rural areas, by not having a combined poll in place or this dedication to where the elections will occur. So by passing this, we will avoid all of that headache.
I'll make the motion.
We got a motion by Shannon.
I'll second.
Seconded by Scott. Any further discussion? Hear none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. The combined polling places. So this is, like I mentioned, in the year that we did the referendum, most people had, most people from Mylan area had to drive to Montevideo to vote. In this case, it would be the Mylan City Hall instead of Montevideo's courthouse.
Yeah.
Same would be for the other townships, for the other towns.
I'll make a motion for the combined poll.
Okay, motion by Eric.
I'll second.
Seconded by Matt. Any further discussion? Hear none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. 19 is to decide the date and time for the annual school board organizational meeting. So.
I just threw that date out there. If there's a different date you'd prefer, do that, but one in the morning, two, 5 o'clock.
Really, we've done these in the morning?
Last year, or this year, it was at 8 o'clock?
In the morning?
I'm open or whatever.
Any issues, Matt?
No, I can, we're working it off.
So do Thursday, January 5th at 8:00 AM? I'll take a motion for that.
I'll move.
Motion by Scott.
I'll second.
Seconded by Shannon.
That was January 5th, you said?
Yep. Thursday, January.
At 8:00 AM, right?
8:00 AM. Any further discussion? Hear none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. We'll move on to the building leader reports, Robin and Tony's and Scott's. You can all read what they have submitted. Maureen, anything to highlight?
No.
Okay.
No.
Also, Steve Sterrood, you can read what he has submitted for, for the month. Then we'll move on to Lackawee Ed Association. Heidi.
I pretty much just have it in you.
Aye.
Everything that we talked about. I'm making more to that.
All right. Nolte, you got anything?
Yeah, I'll talk a little bit about science. Excuse me. So just to give you an update on, I didn't get a chance to fill it out, so my apologies for that, but sixth grade science, we're just looking at physics tectonics right now, and ninth grade science, we're currently looking at. physics tectonics right now, and ninth-grade science, we're currently looking at the energy. Um, after, uh, coming back from the, um, science teacher's, uh, conversation conference, I know Rachel and I are working, trying to come up with some ways to get a little bit more, uh, what's a way to say this, it's more experiential-based first instruction instead of, um, more content-based instruction, so we're just trying to make some adjustments there. Um, there's some challenges that especially we're facing in ninth grade right now, is our classrooms are packed full of students, and we're trying to utilize the lack lab as much as we can, but, um, I know, uh, we've moved tables and stuff in there, but it's like, just as a teacher, it's difficult just to walk around in our classrooms at times, just with the number of students in there, so it's something I want you to make sure you're, or make sure that you're all aware of, uh, is going on. Um, and then there's something else to be aware of, is just the time constraints, like, this is more specific to me, but, um, teaching, uh, two, I'm, I'm team-teaching both of my classes, because I'm, um, just finding ways to make sure that we have time to, uh, connect and make sure that we're covering the same content, and moving at the same kind of pace, and just adds a little extra time, uh, to what we're doing, so it's just something for all of you to hear about, and, uh, I'll be just along with it.
Um, just to go off of that, too, he's, he, he rec, was referencing on page seventy-four and seventy-five, just the five-twelve building, they have the option to put, like, a little blurb in here of what they're doing, um, since science is our, um, must be here, but there is more stuff about, especially at ELL, social studies, not every single languages or every single class is in here, but that's what he's referencing. Um, as far as Mylan classes go, um, there's been a lot of positive things with the EL stuff going on, um, it has impacted the class size, which is, the classes were nice and large, but adding EL has made it even more challenging, um, but at the same time, it's been really good, too. The kids enjoy being in, um, the ones that weren't already in my classes are enjoying being in there, even though it is maybe exhausting and challenging, um, I think they're enjoying being able to be with their peers. Um, a couple of things linked to, like, the science teacher convention we were at up in Duluth, there's a lot of EL, um, related things that I went to, that science teachers were talking about, and one of the things was letting kids answer things in their native language, and then, like, tell us what that means. Um, I haven't done that in front of, like, my whole class yet, I've more done it in small groups when they've been with different people, and I think it's eye-opening for our non, like, multilingual students, too, and, like, it's cool for them to just hear that, um, so I don't, so I think, I think they see that more positively, rather than more negatively than they maybe saw in the past, some of them, um, so it's kind of a cool thing for that. Um, you, you've also talked about your, um, like, having kids, like, ask questions, or, like, explore things before you just, like, throw a bunch of content at them, so I've tried doing that with both my seventh and eighth graders, always before we started new information, um, and that brings up a lot of questions that they have, too, which is cool, so, rather than me just saying, "This is what we're going to talk about," it's more like, "Oh, you already knew that, so let's talk about this, because everyone had this question." Um, so we, I've done that in both of my classes, too, which has been kind of cool. Um, so that's my seventh and eighth grade classes. I do also have a little, um, thread up from Rachel, which is not in here, so I'm just going to kind of go over what she had. Um, she is teaching advanced chem, physics, general chem, and then ninth-grade physical science, um, so here's kind of what she wrote for advanced chem, um, she has twenty-eight students this year, and they are currently studying intermolecular forces and molecular geometry. Um, there have been challenges with twenty-eight students in one section, so lab space and safety is definitely an issue, it would not be feasible to use the lack lab for this class due to the nature of chemicals and equipment used, as well as the need for fume hoods. That was kind of a, uh, it's awesome that there's that many kids in advanced chem, but being all in one section does make it challenging. Uh, for physics, she has eighteen students, um, and they are wrapping up their kinematics section and ready to move into forces. The class today got a, got to try a fun review of this section with a crime scene investigation that required them to solve who done it by using their knowledge of displacement velocity and acceleration. This activity is from the science teacher's convention in Duluth earlier this month. Her general chem has forty-three students in two sections, and they're currently looking at trends found in periodic table and why they exist. And then her ninth-grade class, um, has thirty-three students in one section, I believe it was thirty, was it twenty-nine or thirty before EL changes? It was large beforehand, but she's at thirty now, thirty-three now currently, um, so space has been a challenge, there are only thirty seats in her room, um, so three students take turns standing each day, um, during the class period, you, they have utilized the lack lab as much as possible, um, however, with this many students, I'm discouraged as a teacher and concerned for my students that they are not receiving quality vegetation that they deserve. So, that's kind of her rundown, again, it's not in here, she was hoping to be here, but had to, um, had a friend come in that I can't talk about. Um, yeah, so, and I will say, this is, obviously, there's a lot of, like, both all of us have brought up, some maybe not-so-happy things, um, and I would say, like, probably five-twelve, there's been a lot of frustration amongst some of this, so like, there's positives, like, with EL changes or difference that changes, but at the same time, um, a lot of the teachers are feeling very, like, stressed, um, I don't know how else to put it, I guess it's kind of a good way to put it, I guess, um, with either new classes that they're teaching, or, um, lots of things being asked of us, and there's a lot of stuff, there's positives, there's also a lot of negatives that come along with it. So, like, the EL stuff is amazing, but at the same time, it is very overwhelming, um, which you kind of mentioned, too, so, kind of, yeah, some of the stuff you maybe don't hear about quite as much, just so you kind of understand. Questions about anything?
No, thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else? All right, thank you, we'll move on to, uh, we have the, uh, the signage thing.
I gave a copy to Shannon and Ma.
So, we'll talk about that briefly, so the sign for out front here, um, at the middle school, high school, uh, I think it's finally designed and finally ready to be approved. Um, it'll consist of the, the, uh, a new addition to the top of the, what's already out there, um, that'll be lit up, so you actually know what you're driving by, um, and then the bottom part, uh, that you'll see on there, that'll be lit up or illuminated as well. The scrolling thing that, that's out there now, that'll stay, um, I would hope when we get this up, we probably tone it down as far as the colors and the flashing and whatnot, um, but that'll still be there to put messages across there. Um, so, just wanted to get you guys, you two into the loop, and Danny, I'll show him later, I guess, so. Okay, Rick?
I don't have anything else, I appreciate your attention tonight.
Okay.
Our next meeting is scheduled for the nineteenth, right?
Yep, Monday, the nineteenth, um, at five o'clock, because there's a, uh, music concert that night, so we'll stay have it wrapped up, uh, seven, so that we, if you need to go to that, uh, there's time to do that. Uh, anything else for tonight? Hear ye none, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
A motion.
Motion by Scott.
I'll second.
Seconded by Eric. All those in favor?
Aye.